To order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, October 21st, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of the minutes from the previous meetings, October 7th, 2019, and then a special meeting on the same date. Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jared. Thank you. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I have none. We have no presentations scheduled for tonight. Next up is public input. I have one card from a member of the public who wishes to speak now, and that would be Esther Pat.
You came back soon as I thought you would, so I will wait.
You'll wait, okay. Does any other member of the public wish to address the council at this point? And welcome, John Hall. I do, we'll use you as a resource if necessary. Next up are reports from the standing committee, and this will be the Committee of the Whole. Councilmember Jacobson?
On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2019-10-041R, a resolution accepting a Midwest grows green grant from the IPM Institute of North America.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Bill. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2019-10-056, and ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-92 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, namely Cypress Point at Stillwater Landing.
Second. Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Eric. Are there any reports of special committees? Reports of officers at this point. We now move to new business. First item under new business is a staff appointment in the Police Department. I'm pleased to submit the following appointment for your approval, and it is promotion to Lieutenant Detective Sergeant David G. Smizer. Dave began his employment with the Urbana Police Department in June of 2001. He served as a patrol officer for six years. In March of 2005, he became a field training officer. In 2007, he was assigned to the Criminal Investigations Division, serving as the adult felony detective. He became certified as an elderly services officer, and certified through the state of Illinois as a juvenile officer. He's had 173 training sessions, including traffic crash investigation, pedestrian bicycle investigation, and homicide investigation. He was promoted to patrol sergeant in September of 2017. He remained in that capacity for two years, until being assigned to the Criminal Investigations Division as detective sergeant. He's a former member of the Illinois Army National Guard, has a Bachelor of Science in Law Enforcement and Justice Administration, with a minor in psychology from Western Illinois University. He's married, he's married to his wife, obviously. A police services representative. And together, they have four children, Grant, Owen, Carson, and Kayler. And Dave, why don't you come forward, so folks can see who you are? And is the family here?
Nope.
Two of them here. Why don't you stand up, so we can, we can all see you? Great. Great, wonderful. So if you have any questions for our new lieutenant?
I just say thanks for stepping up to the job. We have a good department. It seems like promotions have been very positive for the people who've been in the ranks, moving up, and I think that your achievement is, we look forward to great things for it, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, we have a tremendous group of very qualified candidates for promotion within the Police Department, so it makes this job a little easier. Congratulate, well, I guess I shouldn't congratulate you until after, I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion to approve David Smizer as lieutenant.
I wouldn't want to break tradition, so I will make the motion-
It's all yours, Dean.
-to promote Lieutenant David Smizer to the position of lieutenant.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Moving on to Resolution 2019-10-042R, which is a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance at 4018 North Lincoln Avenue. And in the audience, we have John Hall, who's the county, from the County Planning and Zoning Department, and he's available to answer questions if you have any questions on this. And Marcus will be giving the staff report.
Good evening, everybody. If it would please City Council, I would like to present both of these cases together, and then they would require individual votes at the end.
Sure.
Okay. At the August 15th, 2019 meeting, the Champaign County Zoning Board of Appeals considered two related cases, two related requests for a 17-acre property located at the southeast corner of Centennial Farm Road and Lincoln Avenue, commonly known as 4018 North Lincoln Avenue, within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and recommended approval of both requests to the County Board. And the two cases are, as the mayor stated, there is also an associated county case, which would authorize a special use permit for this same rural residential overlay district that is required for a rural residential overlay district according to the county's zoning ordinance. On October 10th, 2019, the County Environmental Land Use Committee recommended that the County Board also approve both cases. These will go to the County Board on October 24th for final review, along with that one related special use permit request. On October 10th, also, the Urbana Plan Commission recommended that City Council approve a resolution of protest in Case CZZBA 931 AM 19, that's the Rural Residential Overlay District, and to defeat a resolution of protest in Case CZZBA 934 AM 19, which is the rezoning contingent on the county providing City Council with further information on how the Ag 2 district relates to the floodplain. The proposed development would include five developable lots and three non-developable lots. The petitioner's existing home would be on one of the five developable lots, and the existing detached garage, which has an upstairs dwelling, would be on another lot. Two of the remaining three developable lots contain a tree farm that has not been maintained and holds less conservation significance. In addition to the two rezoning cases, the petitioners submitted the associated special use permit case for County Board consideration. In 1973, when Champaign County zoning ordinance was adopted, the subject property, the entire 19 acres, was split-zoned, with the western six acres zoned County Ag 2, and the eastern 13 acres zoned County CR. Then in 2007, the Urbana Plan Commission forwarded to Urbana City Council a recommendation to defeat resolutions of protest for rezoning those six acres from County Ag 2 to County CR Conservation Recreation, so that it was then rezoned, and it was all Conservation Recreation. And at the same time, for a rural residential overlay district that contained six developable lots and three non-developable lots. The minutes of that Plan Commission meeting showed that there was no discussion, and the vote was eight votes aye and zero votes nay. Following that, on March 5th, 2007, Urbana City Council defeated resolutions of protest for both requests, and the minutes also showed that there was no discussion. After that, the county then granted a rural residential overlay district with the six developable lots. Because a plat was not approved, within two years of that approval, that rural residential overlay district expired, and now a new RRO district must be established. This is the proposed rural residential overlay district. It contains five developable lots, one less than before, and still three developable, non-developable lots, I'm going to say buildable from now on, along the saline drainage ditch here, in the non-developable area of the floodway. The site plan overlaid with the proposed zoning shows that lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and Outlot A would need rezoned to County Ag 2, because the proposed event center is not a permitted use in CR Conservation Recreation, and would need rezoned, while Outlots B, 4A, and 5A would stay zoned as County CR due to their location in the floodplain, and because they're not going to be used for the proposed event center, or actually, the existing event The RRO district is considered an overlay zoning designation that is in addition to the underlying zoning. All other restrictions, such as permitted use, setbacks, lot coverage, remain in effect whether the rural residential overlay is granted or not. And additionally, the final layout of the lots and the site engineering would still need to be considered for approval by the City of Urbana as part of its major subdivision review process. Some of the Champaign County goals and policies, as stated in the memo, coincide with relevant goals and objectives of the Urbana Comprehensive Plan, which does designate the future land use of this area as residential between heavy and light industrial uses. Staff did find that the rezoning to County Ag 2 with a rural residential overlay designation to accommodate the proposed subdivision would be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. Relating to city zoning, there is no difference in the permissibility of the proposed uses between the existing Conservation Recreation zoning district and the proposed Ag zoning district. Staff does not anticipate a negative impact to the city, or to the city's ability to plan or manage growth or development. In regards to the October 10th Plan Commission, the primary subject of discussion was that the Commission was concerned that granting the rural residential overlay district would allow too many developable lots in this rural area. The findings are summarized in the staff report, including that the proposed rezoning is generally compatible with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan, which shows this area's residential future land use, that the proposed zoning change returns a portion of the property to its original County Ag 2 zoning district, and that the proposed overlay district is similar to one approved by the City of Urbana in 2007. At its October 10th, 2019, public hearing, the Urbana Plan Commission found that allowing three developable lots was preferable to allowing five developable lots, and recommended approving a resolution of protest against the RRO district. And at the same meeting, the Plan Commission found that rezoning from CR to Ag 2 is acceptable, and recommended defeating a resolution of protest against the proposed rezoning contingent on that additional information, which was later provided, which shows that the dividing line between the proposed Ag 2 zoning and the remaining Conservation Recreation zoning is in line with the western boundary of the floodway for the saline drainage ditch. So it makes perfect sense to put the dividing line there. Based on the approval by both Plan Commission and City Council of the earlier residential, rural residential district, which contained six developable lots versus the proposed five developable lots, city staff do not find a compelling reason to protest either request. City Council has the following options. In Case 931, defeat a resolution of protest, or defeat a resolution of protest contingent upon specific provisions, or approve a resolution of protest. And the same for Case 934, defeat, defeat contingent, or approve. And that is the end of my staff report, and happy to take questions or defer to Mr. Hall.
And just a reminder, if you approve a resolution of protest, it will require a supermajority vote at the Champaign County Board level.
Thank you for that reminder.
Any questions for Marcus or John Hall? Dennis?
I guess at this point, we're not actually trying to evaluate the layout of the individual lots, is that correct?
That's correct. The rural residential overlay district would lock in the maximum number of lots, but not their specific lot lines and configurations. However, the site plan has been reviewed by the city engineer, and confirms 98% that it meets with county zoning requirements of lot width and lot area.
Because there are some questions I have about, about that, and I'm just going to mention one. You're saying that the difference between, the division of this property between, the new zoning and the Conservation District zoning, which is basically along the alignment of the floodplain of the saline ditch-
Right.
...which now have become liable as outlots. But when I looked at the 100-year flood plan for the saline, it covers quite a bit of Lot 4, half of Lot 3, and a corner of Lot 5. So how does that play into, you're feeling confident that not more of this property needs to be considered to be Conservation District?
Good question. So this boundary between proposed Ag 2 and CR is of the floodway.
The floodway, which is different than the flood-
Floodplain.
...flood.
Yes. So the floodway is that area that's regulated not only by the city, but also by the Army Corps of Engineers, where no development is supposed to occur. And the floodplain is less regulated, you can develop in there, but the typical requirement is that the elevation of the first floor is either at or above the base flood elevation, which can often be attained by filling or moving dirt around.
Okay. So that's rather similar to what we've seen in a consideration for construction near the boneyard?
Correct. And that is a whole separate permitting process that's also overseen by the city engineer, if it was in the city, but I'm also fairly certain, I think the county requires a one year free board above that base flood elevation.
And the niche of property, which is in the northeast corner of, of the quadrant, which is not part of the property under consideration, but shows on the overhead map, or the, the map, that there's a house and outbuilding served by a driveway off of Centennial Farm Road, that, is that part of the property owned by this individual?
No, it's not.
So it's a different property completely?
That's a separate parcel, and they'll work out those access issues.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Bill?
Yeah, I noticed one of the conditions in the special uses, that I guess the Board, County Board hasn't voted on that yet, right? They would be voting on that at the same time?
Yes. They'll be going over those conditional-
One of the conditions involves reconstruction of the septic field area, septic system. And I noticed on one of our other maps, where it shows sewer interceptors, that there's an interceptor that comes up, and it looks like it serves that house to the, about 300 yards to the southwest. So I was wondering what the rules are as far as how close they have to be to the interceptor, and what would happen if, I mean, is there any way to require them to connect to the interceptor, or encourage them to special use?
I think there have already been discussions about whether or not they could access that sanitary system, and there are discussions with neighboring owners, and I think in reading the county memo, that the direction that the applicant is going in is doing an approved septic system that would be able to service an event center as well as the residences. It would be great to be able to hook them up to public, but I don't think that's going to be available in this instance. But we would get into that more when it came through for the major subdivision review.
I suppose potentially that could be a condition, though, in the rezoning, whether the county puts a condition on, or whether we add a condition, is that right? Would we be able to add a condition, something like that?
I think you could put in that the city would recommend, if possible, you know, adding on to any public sanitary system versus private. I would defer to our legal division if that was a condition that is allowable by-
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know what the rules are with the sanitary district. I don't think their actual boundaries go up that far yet.
No, they don't.
They have an interceptor up there, so presumably, eventually, they will go up there, so I just wondered how that worked.
Right.
It's good to know people are talking about it, but I don't really see-
I forget what the distances are, but eventually, when it does get close enough, they would be required to, to tap in.
Okay.
Sharice, you had a question?
Um, yes. Why is this coming before the County Board now? What I noticed in the application is that they have operated an unauthorized event center on the subject property for several years. What does that mean? What are the events? And why now?
Maybe John would like to answer that? Could you state your name and title, please?
John Hall, zoning administrator of Champaign County. Actually, I think that memo overstated the situation. Mr. Kope has been operating his event center as a temporary use, which limits the number of times he can have events. I believe most of the events are wedding receptions.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Well, kind of. And then why now? I mean, is it because he got caught, or something came up, that toilets overflowed? What?
He's been, our temporary use permit is allowed to be a rolling permit, and he's been doing that. His, he and his wife is no longer a member of the faculty at the university, and so I think they're looking at this as a change in their life, and they want to expand to be able to do more events at the event center.
Okay. So the other thing that I was noticing is that, what was, as far as the lots, because they would be rezoned as residential? Or something?
Going for, some of them going to Ag 2 agriculture, rather than CR.
Okay. But that means they could put a house on? Okay, so are they going to try to expand this into some kind of business, where it's like the, you know, you have the wedding, the reception, and the honeymoon on a little cottage in the country, or something like that? I just want to understand why now.
That was not included as part of the event center. I believe they could, you can do a bed and breakfast by right, under the county rules.
Okay.
So while that wasn't part of the explicit special use permit, I think a certain amount could be done.
So, kind of, yeah, that's what they're trying to plan to do?
There's been no discussion of that.
There's been no discussion of it, so you don't know?
Right.
Okay. That's all I have to think of right now.
Eric?
I'm trying to understand the distinction between what we do, and whether three lots or five lots will be allowed. And I'm detecting perhaps a little bit of daylight between Plan Commission and staff, because the staff said we ought to protest the permission of the five. Deny, yeah, we ought to, we ought to deny. We ought to vote in such a way as to deny the five, and limit to three.
That was the Plan Commission's recommendation.
Right. That was the Plan Commission's recommendation. And the staff recommendation, you didn't seem to feel that, you thought that five was sort of okay. A very rough paraphrase.
Yes. And especially because it's actually less than what was approved 12 years ago.
Okay.
Which was six developable lots. And as far as staff can see, nothing has changed since then. It's a reduction in the proposed intensity. And I think going back to the, the Comprehensive Plan, there was a, you know, Plan Commission thought that it was non-contiguous development that was non-compact. So it, not only was it not next to the city, and kind of out there in the country, but it was also too dense. Whereas, staff feel that, yes, it is non-contiguous, but it is, would be using less land on smaller lots than if those five lots were to go on to rurally dense lots, which would be more consumptive use of the land.
And, and maybe, of course, the lots are peculiarly shaped, and they're not all the same size, but roughly, oh, well, let's, so here's Lot, yeah, let's pick any one, let's say that Lot 3 is kind of average. How big is Lot 3?
Well, I will tell you exactly.
So just get a feel for the-
Unless John knows off the top of his head. I don't.
So, maybe Lot 3 isn't typical.
So Lot 3 is 136,000 square feet. None of the lots are less than one acre.
None are less than one acre.
Correct.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that if we connect, if a lot connected to the city sewer, that they would have to be annexed into the city. Is that correct?
That is the standard of the memorandum of agreement between the city and, all of the cities, and the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district. I would like to correct myself that one of these lots here, I think, is like 10,000 square feet, but it's 16,000 square feet. And, yes. But most of them are more than an acre.
So, sorry.
Yep. So a lot, if it's contiguous and it connects to the sanitary sewer, then it would have to come into the city. But if it's not contiguous, they would have to enter into an annexation agreement that states that, once they become contiguous, they'd have to come into the city. Just wanted to clarify that.
So one of the questions that Plan Commission had, no, sorry, yeah, Plan Commission, they were concerned about Lot 2 and Lot 5, if I'm reading these correctly. So according to Mr. Hopkins, he said that Lot 2 is tiny, and Lot 5 is not buildable. I was wondering if you could expand on that?
I cannot speculate as to what Mr. Hopkins was thinking at the time. As far as I know, both lots, 2 and 5, would be buildable.
So by city standards, they would be, if it was annexed into the city, it would be buildable?
Let me double-check the table that was provided in the memo. So the city agriculture zoning requires one acre, and, of area, and 150 foot of frontage, and that's the same in the county, excuse me, the Conservation Recreation zoning. So regardless of its zoning, it would be required to have one acre-
So regardless of its zoning, it would be required to have one acre and 150 feet of frontage to be a buildable lot. So out lot A, the one that I said has 16,000 square feet, that's already proposed to be not buildable. The rest of the buildable lots would meet city requirements at this time for being built on.
So lot one, two, and five would meet those requirements?
Correct.
Because those are the smallest ones?
Correct.
On here?
Yes, they went through a lot of rejiggering of lot lines to meet the, both the county and the city minimum requirements. And by rejiggering, I mean architectural and engineering stuff.
That's a technical term. Dennis?
Yeah, and I have to admit that it was a couple of days ago when I read this more carefully, so I'm going to try to remember. But I thought that, that, that the requirements for doing, allowing construction of residential homes in the outlying area in the county required 35 acres. Is that cor, is that wrong? Thirty-five, where, where does the 35 acres per house come into this, play into this?
The 35 acres is part of that threshold for when you need an RRO or not.
Yes.
If you're doing in general, more than three lots, less than 35 acres, you would need an RRO. And so in this case, they could do three lots by right. They want to do five, that's why they need the RRO.
So they could do three and be, and they wouldn't even have to come forward to us, but they've decided that five is what they want?
Yes. And, and with three, you know, that raises the question, well, are you going to build a new street for three lots? Are you going to have three driveways centralized? And so when we deal with RROs, we would prefer to see a street. Everyone knows streets cost. They've, this street is much shorter than the street that was in the original RRO. So this is, I think, a better overall design. Yes, there is a street, there are two extra lots, but now it opens onto the new approved Lincoln Avenue. And I know the county ZBA thought it was a good proposal. And I'm not here arguing for the proposal.
Yeah, right.
But just trying to convey how it compares to what the county requirements are.
But the recommendation was from the, is it the planning commission, that they thought that three was sufficient? They didn't agree with staff's opinion?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, if you approve the resolution of protest, it will take a super majority on the county board to approve the five.
Correct.
Any further questions? Someone like to make a motion so we can move to discussion? Jared?
Before a motion, I just wanted to point out, there's 43,560 feet, square feet in an acre, and both two and five are 43,580 square feet. So they very carefully drew that line to make it at least one acre on two and five. Just want to point that out, I guess.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Jared?
I guess, I'm gonna, we're gonna do the first ordinance. We have to vote on these separately, correct, Marcus?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that first one would be resolution number 2019-10-042R, resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, 418 North Lincoln Avenue, CCZBA 931-AM-19. I'm gonna make a motion to deny that.
To defeat, you're moving to defeat?
I'm not moving to defeat.
You're moving it. You're moving to approve a resolution?
Moving to approve.
Okay.
I do not see a problem with the five lots.
And it's the reserve, this reverse.
The, whatever the opposite is.
Okay. So you're moving to approve, and if you approve of the five lots, you'll vote no. If you want three lots, you'll vote yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
No?
No, the opposite.
No.
I think they should be able to do the five lots.
So it's a motion to defeat?
I thought I needed a motion to defeat.
You do, if that's what you want.
Okay. Well, I guess I don't want to defeat my own motion. I'm getting it confused, yes. Motion to defeat.
So you're making a motion to defeat a resolution of protest?
Yes.
That's your motion?
A motion to defeat the resolution of protest.
I will second that, assuming I understand it.
Assuming we've got it right.
All right, Jared has moved to defeat a resolution of protest. It was seconded by Eric. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I guess clarity. So my question, I guess I have, my question is, you moved to defeat a motion of protest. Is that correct? Correct, all right. So that would, I mean, so it would not require a super majority. And then, but still, I guess the question would be whether three lots or five lots would be subdivided, but that's not really what's being achieved here, is that correct? It's just how the council, the, the county would be having to vote.
Yes, the county will actually be the final vote on this.
Yeah, and they're going to decide whether it's going to be three or five lots.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would there be a plat that comes back to us? Yeah, so we would have to approve the final plat, too?
Yeah.
There's multi-steps in this process.
The event business, is that now regulated or whatever? Is that now meeting standards that it's supposed to meet or?
County ZBA did approve a special use permit for the event center.
Okay.
It will allow essentially unlimited operation only if your resolution 043R, only if, if that also passes through the county board.
So what happens if it doesn't?
Probably there will be more hearings about a different special use permit.
Okay, just wanted to ask about that, okay.
Eric?
But just a point of clarification, what we're doing is advisory to the county. We're actually, none of what we're doing, it only has intellectual and moral force, no practical force.
Trying to override a municipal protest is the most difficult thing that ever goes through our office.
Really? Okay.
Right now, this is on the consent agenda, and that's only because we didn't see a problem, but if, if this resolution of protest is not defeated, you know, I'll make county board aware of that at the meeting. It might be pulled off consent agenda or it might not. The ELOC, there really wasn't much discussion about this at ELOC. So.
All right, are we ready to vote? Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Roberts?
I'm going to vote no. I'd like to have lower density.
And Wu?
I'll abstain.
Five ayes, one no, one abstention, that motion passes. Next up is resolution number 2019-10-043R. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2019-10-056, an ordinance, or, I'm sorry, resolution number 2019-10-043R, resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance for 418 North Lincoln Avenue, Champaign County ZBA case 934-AM-19, be approved.
I'll second that.
We're not making a motion defeat, we're making a motion to approve the resolution, correct?
No, we're making a motion to defeat.
You're making a motion. Do you want to make the same motion you made last time, which is a motion to defeat the resolution of protest?
Oh, yes, correct.
Okay. So your motion is to defeat the resolution?
To defeat the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second a motion to defeat the motion.
Defeat the resolution.
Defeat the resolution, not the motion, sorry.
We're so glad we don't do this very often. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
Seven ayes, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Okay. Next up is ordinance number 2019-10-057, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for the rear yard at 308 West California. And also at this point, we'll be discussing ordinance number 2019-10-058, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for lot width at 308 West California. I have two members of the public who wish to speak. I'll have them come up first and then we'll do staff presentation. Esther Pat?
Thank you, I'm Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Coler Avenue, and I urge you to defeat both of these requests for variance. By law, a variance is not something to which anyone who wants one is entitled, even though sometimes it seems to be treated that way. The zoning ordinance allows you to grant variances only when they are necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure, which are not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. And there are no such special circumstances at 308 West California. Many properties in the R2 district are not large enough to accommodate two habitable structures with, and then also have sufficient off-street parking. And that makes sense because R2 is intended for one single housing unit on each lot. It's sort of a special thing that the city would even let people convert a garage on a single-family lot in the R2 district, and that's why one needs special permission for it. The only thing that is special, which is really, I would say, more unusual about this case, is the flagrant violation of the laws. And this is why I feel so strongly about it. Of all the things the city's ever done, I am truly shocked that this administration would actually promote the idea that unlawful behavior in itself is the special circumstance that justifies a variance. And in this case, we're talking five variances, not that you're voting on all of them. The previous owners, as you know, violated state and local laws when they illegally connected to the sewer system and did electrical and plumbing work to create an apartment or apartments in the garage, and, and they were violating state and local plumbing and electrical laws as well. The petitioner in this case, a real estate professional who either really did know better or should have known better, bought the property on March 1st and continued leasing the illegal portion of the property, the garage, for seven more months. I'm glad that the city didn't push him to kick the tenants out, but did the petitioner collect revenue, rent revenue on that for those seven months that this illegal property that's not supposed to be rented was being rented? I'd like to know the answer to that, and I hope you want to know the answer and we'll find out. Did the city fine him for renting property without paying the rental registration fee or registering the property? And the biggie, has the city taken any action against the previous owner for what appears to have been at least eight years of violation of the rental registration law and the zoning ordinance and state and local building codes? The only thing I find more shocking than the flagrant violations of law by the property owners is the city's response. In support of this request, in the memo, it says, quote, "City staff have received no complaints about the existing apartments or in the garage." Is this the new standard in Urbana? That it's okay to rent a place that's not approved for occupancy as long as the tenants don't complain? I don't think so. But, but you're making it. If you, if you say yes to this, that is something you're saying yes to. And what about the requirement for special circumstance relating to the land? Do you really want to set a standard that illegal use of the land for profit satisfies the requirement of a special circumstance that's required under the zoning ordinance? Unlawful behavior should be punished, not rewarded with an excessive number of zoning variances. If someone wants to convert a garage into a living unit and they can't do it without violating floor area ratio, backyard setback, side yard setback, lot width, and parking requirements, then maybe it's okay for the city to say, hey, you know what? Two structures just don't fit on this property. I don't know the petitioner or why city officials are so strongly in favor of granting him these five variances just so he can increase the amount of rental income he gets at 308 West California, but please read the law. And when you look at the law and this request, I do not see how anyone could say accurately that an approval of these variances is anything other than a special privilege being granted to an individual. And that, under the law, you are not supposed to do. Please deny these requests. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael Pleva.
I live at 708 West Iowa Street in Urbana. My wife and I, Elizabeth Wagner, asked you deny the request for the major variances at 308 West California Street that would allow a garage to be used as a residential rental in an R2 single-family zoning district. Without a host of variance and waivers, and Esther's pointed out that there were five, the garage to be used as a rental unit would not comply with zoning requirements. It was noted during the ZBA public meeting, the zoning ordinance allows granting of variances when they are necessary due to special circumstances relating to land or structure, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the district. However, the special circumstances involve the illegal use of the property by the past and current owner. Although city staff declared that ZBA actions do not set precedence, their statement is incongruous with city regulations. If you read the ZBA website, it says a major variance is recognized as having potential impact on the larger area and may infect, and may affect enforcement of zoning ordinances elsewhere in the city. By inspection, the statement demonstrates that granting a major variance establishes precedent. In this case, it would be a precedent that allows a real estate agent to purchase property that he knew was illegally used in violation of the R2 zoning law and request numerous variance. Such a decision will have an adverse impact on the enforcement of zoning ordinances throughout the city. If the city council agrees to this position, how does the city justify restricting other current and future property owners? Precedent alone and the impact on zoning enforcement throughout Urbana should demand outright rejection of the petition. Specifically, the special circumstances are that are associated with this property that the previous owner illegally installed three apartments in a garage without zoning or health and safety approvals. In 2019, Mr. Gordon purchased the property. The suggestion that Mr. Gordon did not know of this illegal use is preposterous. Mr. Gordon contracted a plumber to make repairs to the illegal garage apartments in order to perpetuate its illegal use. Mr. Gordon is a realtor and is a trained and licensed real estate professional. Before purchasing a property and conducting even a modicum of due diligence, he knew that the house and garage violated Urbana R2 zoning laws and that the property failed basic health and safety regulations. After the plumber refused, Mr. Gordon applied to the ZBA for remedy to secure his investment and profit. This scenario does not meet the requirement of special practical difficulty as defined by the major variance criterion of the Urbana zoning ordinance. A serious concern is that Urbana requires law-abiding landlords to keep their properties up to code and pay an annual fee to fund the rental registration program. The purpose of the program is to protect tenants against illegal, unsafe housing from Everest landlords, doing exactly what the former owners, the Hublers, did and what Mr. Gordon continued. The Urbana City Council, as our elected representatives, establishes policy and passes laws, such as the downtown-to-campus plan. Boards such as ZBA and indeed city staff implement these laws. In this case, it appears to me that, that the ZBA and city staff are making policy. In this case, it appears to me that the ZBA and city staff are making policy. A number of citizens asked city staff what penalties were imposed on the previous owners and the current owner to operate this housing in violation of R2 zoning and against sewer and electrical violations. I have seen no response. As a long-term resident of Urbana, I moved here in 1974 as a postdoctoral fellow, and my wife, Dr. Elizabeth Wagner, and I have lived at our Urbana home since 1978. When we upgraded our kitchen in 1982, we had permits and inspections. When we had rental property, we met all city codes and registered the rental property as a rental unit. When we conducted landscaping to our home in 2010 and additional, and added accessory buildings, we had city permits and city staff inspections. In 2013, we had further remodeling. We had all the necessary permits and inspections. I am not a realtor. I am a citizen. If we are able to obey the law without demanding variances, why should Mr. Gordon, a licensed real estate agent, be allowed to manipulate the system? Mr. Gordon purchased an R2 single-family property. He should bring it into compliance with the law. We recommend that the city council take action on the unlawful use of 308 West California by the former and current owners. We believe unlawful behavior should be punished, not rewarded. We oppose to making this garage into a second livable structure squeezed onto one single R2 zoned lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time on this case? Okay. Lilly will do the staff presentation.
Thank you, everybody. And so this is a, tonight, we're discussing an ordinance approving a major variance for the rear yard and an ordinance approving a major variance for lot width. Dan Gordon requests two major variances to allow an existing garage to be used as a dwelling on his property at 308 West California Avenue. While a garage is considered an accessory structure and may be built up to 18 inches from the property line, a garage used as a dwelling is considered a second principal structure and must be placed inside of required yards. The garage is located seven feet into the required 10-foot rear yard, so a major variance is required to allow Mr. Gordon to use the garage as a dwelling. Also, a second dwelling unit on one lot requires a minimum 60-foot lot width. Mr. Gordon's lot is slightly less than 60 feet wide, so a second major variance is requested to allow a second dwelling on the lot. Zoning requests must be decided before Building Safety starts working with Dan Gordon to ensure building safety. As you can probably imagine, residential building codes and garage building codes are very different. So tonight, we're just deciding upon zoning, and Building Safety will work with Dan Gordon on the garage unit and getting it up to building, applicable building codes. Zoning Board of Appeals first heard this case on August 21st, 2019. Staff at that meeting recommended a continuance to collect public input. Zoning Board of Appeals met the following month, heard staff's analysis of public input and response, and then voted on each case. The ZBA discussed all of Mr. Gordon's requests at the August 21st, 2019 meeting. A summary of the public hearing and discussion is presented below in the staff memorandum. At that meeting, the ZBA continued all of the cases to the September 18th meeting. At the September 18th meeting, the ZBA approved a conditional use permit to allow a second principal structure, second dwelling unit, on an R2 zoning lot, a minor variance to allow three parking spaces rather than the required four for two dwelling units, and a minor variance to allow a principal structure to encroach one foot into the required five-foot side yard. The ZBA then denied a major variance request to increase the allowable floor area ratio from the maximum of .4 for R2 single-family home residential lots to 0.51. Really quickly, I want to go over some changes. So the cases were advertised as major variances, but were found out later to be found that there are minor variances. There were lesser requests than what were advertised. Those cases are ZBA 19 Major 08 and ZBA 19 Major 09. So they still have that title, but they were minor variances, and Zoning Board of Appeals voted to approve them. That was the parking in the side yard. Cases that were denied and do not go to city council was ZBA 19 Major 05. That was the floor area ratio major variance request. And cases that were recommended for approval for city council was ZBA 2019 Major 06 and ZBA 2019 Major 10. That's the rear yard. The garage structure is too close to the rear yard. And the lot width, the lot is nearly two feet or it's just under 60 feet wide. Mr. Gordon recently purchased 308 West California Avenue, which contains a house and a garage. When Mr. Gordon contacted a plumber to make repairs to the apartments in the garage, the plumber suggested he talk to city staff. City staff informed Mr. Gordon that garages cannot contain apartments without proper zoning and building safety approvals and scheduled an inspection. After that inspection, city staff concluded the previous owner had converted the garage into three single-bedroom apartments without zoning or building safety approvals. At most, a lot in the R2 zoning district can have two dwelling units if a conditional use permit is granted. Mr. Gordon would like to reduce the number of apartments in the garage from three to one. To meet all building safety requirements, it will be expensive to remove two units and convert the garage into a single apartment. But Mr. Gordon is willing to work with Building Safety Division staff to make necessary changes. He would continue to rent out the house on the lot. If the requests are approved, the garage would contain one apartment, which would require periodic inspections and a new certificate of occupancy. Since no complaints about illegal building activity in the garage and no complaints about the garage apartments themselves were ever filed with the city, staff had no knowledge of the conversion of the garage into apartments until Mr. Gordon contacted the city and the building was inspected. Without the variances, the garage could remain, but could not contain any apartments. All apartments in the, all apartment living space in the garage was vacated September 30th, 2019, and on October 2nd, 2019, city staff inspected the garage to ensure the building is vacant. If the variances are granted, staff will work with Mr. Gordon to ensure that the renovation of the garage into a single apartment meets all building codes. The applicant states in his letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals that the garage apartments were good for graduate students and were affordable. The area is close to downtown Urbana and the University of Illinois campus and is walkable and bikeable, making it a convenient location for renters who may not own a car and who desire a quiet place to live in. City staff have received no complaints about the existing apartments in the garage. In addition, no one testified at the public hearing that the garage apartments have been a nuisance, and none of the communications received have indicated that the apartments have been problematic or detrimental to the neighborhood. The proposal would remove three illegal, non-code compliant apartments and replace them with one apartment that will meet building codes and, depending on which, if any, variances are granted, will comply with zoning regulations. The proposed use would then be legal and would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district or the public. The R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District does not allow, does allow duplexes if a conditional use permit is granted. Of the R2 properties in the West Urbana neighborhood, approximately 10% of the properties contain legally non-conforming duplexes. The essential character of the district is mostly single-family homes with a small, but not insignificant, number of duplexes, plus an even smaller number of older apartment buildings. An additional two-unit property should not have a significant impact on the character of the neighborhood. Since it appears that the previous owners were likely trying to hide the conversion of the garage from neighbors, the building has been kept to look like a garage on a single-family home lot. The floor area ratio variance request was denied at Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This reduces the amount of living area in the garage apartment and requires the owner to abide by the 0.4 maximum floor area ratio for the zoning district. The variances would allow the existing garage to be used as a dwelling, but with one less floor of the garage being used for living space. And I'm going to pull up exhibits. All right. So the location, right across the street from Liel Elementary School. The block has a lot of multifamily buildings and single-family homes, many of which are rental and are registered on the rental registration. The zoning map shows that it is currently, the block is zoned R2. Much of this block has many structures that were, are legally non-conforming and were built before the block was zoned R2. The future land use map shows that this block, it shows residential from the 2005 comprehensive plan. This is a view from the alley. It looks very much like a garage, as you can see. But when you look at the view from the 308 West California, the backyard, so you're looking from the patio of the house, there, you can see it looks much more like a dwelling unit. This part right here, where you can see the mouse hovering, that's an addition that will need to be removed whether or not any variances are approved or denied tonight. And you can see here is the parking space. Parking spaces right here fit three car parking spaces. And this is a boundary survey that was done by Burns, Clancy &amp; Associates. You'll all have a blow up of this in the presentation a little bit later. But we don't require that of applicants, but as you can see by this, quickly looking at here, even looking at the fence lines, property line, the fences don't seem to really match up, and every little inch is really counted when it comes to knowing where the garage is in accordance to the property lines. Staff required that of the applicant. A quick timeline. This area was actually plotted in 1852, and you can see that the lots were 57.9 feet, very similar to what we see today as what the width of this lot is. In many parts of, older parts of Urbana, we have lot sizes that are less than 60 feet in lot width, and there are lot shapes. In 1909, this duck alley was vacated, giving 308 and 306 West California an extra six feet, and that brought the property to 63 feet wide, roughly. In 1989, the owners of 310 West California, wishing to sell their property, sold, bought six feet of property from 308 West California, as they had an addition that was over the property line. So the arrangement was done between two private properties and recorded at the Champaign County Recording Office, and it was not known to the city until after the fact. This would have, arrangement would have needed a minor variance and a subdivision. In 1901, the house was built, the garage was built, and both were built to code and inspected, and there was a certificate of occupancy. In 2001, that's when staff suspects that the owners converted the garage into a three-unit apartment building, basically the garage. And that's when, as a garage, can be built up to 18 inches or a foot and a half of the property lines. The three feet was okay for a garage for the rear line, but as a dwelling unit, it needs to be 10 feet from a rear property line. That was also when the mechanical building addition on the side was added, and that brought the garage structure to be less than a foot from the side property line. So we had rear yard, side yard, the floor area ratio, as two floors of this garage being living space, that is 765 square feet of living space over what is the maximum floor area for the, a lot of this size. And then the parking area requires four for two dwelling units, and this space is only, can hold three car parking spaces. Of the two major variances and ordinances that are for tonight, the first one is Major -6, allow a principal building to encroach seven feet into a required 10-foot rear yard. As you can see, the garage matches up with a lot of the garages that are off this alleyway. So the siding for a garage makes a lot of sense. Again, garages can be built 18 inches or one and a half feet from a property line. This garage is built just, just under three feet from the property line. As a dwelling unit, it is seven feet too close to the rear property line. And then Major -10, reduce the required lot width for establishing a duplex or duplex density on a lot from 60 feet to 58 feet. So here, you can see 70, 57.9, then they got six feet, then they sold six feet, we're back to 57.9, requiring a major variance. In this case, staff received a lot of public input, and we spent time to make sure that we were covering and addressing all public input. At the Zoning Board of Appeal meetings on August 21st and September 18th, staff received 15 letters. Nine letters were opposed to the requests, and five letters were in support. And one letter was from the applicant to the Zoning Board of Appeals. On August 21st, staff recommended that ZBA hear the staff report, collect public input, and then continue the case to address any concerns or issues that were raised. On September 18th, staff made a recommendation of partial approval and addressed some of the concerns received in public input below. Below is a summary of some of the main issues expressed and comments received by staff in writing or stated at the public hearing, and staff's responses in italics on the slide. Several people expressed concern that granting the requests will set a precedent that will need to be followed in future cases. The city council reviews each case on its own merits with respect to established criteria. Decisions are not made based on a previous cases or the concept of precedent. All cases are different, and all cases must be judged against the relevant criteria. Granting a request in one case does not set a precedent that must be followed in other cases, since all cases are unique. There were concerns that the requests are approved, illegal work on the garage would continue. The structure will need to be brought up to code whether the requests are approved or denied. There was a concern that there is no compelling reason to grant approval. The city council must evaluate the variance and, the variance criteria to determine whether there is a compelling reason to grant the requests or not. Zoning Board of Appeals on September 18th voted for partial approval. They denied the floor area ratio request, and they said, they voted five ayes to two nays to forward the rear yard variance to city council with a recommendation to approve the request. Zoning Board of Appeals then voted six ayes and one nay to forward major variance for the lot width to the city council with a recommendation to approve the request. For this case, there's a lot of moving pieces, so I'm going to read through the variance criteria. First variance criteria. Are there special circumstances or special practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance? The lot is narrower than required due to the six feet of lot width having been transferred to 310 West California Avenue in 1990, prior to the house being built at 308 West California Avenue. The city council had, I mean, the city had no knowledge of the land transaction, and had it been aware, the transaction would not have been approved because it would have violated the zoning ordinance lot width requirements. The land transfer also reduced the amount of usable floor area that can be built on the lot, and the lot is narrower than 60 feet required to establish a duplex on the lot. It isn't feasible to transfer 2.22 feet from either adjacent property to widen the lot to 60 feet. Another practical difficulty is that when the garage was built, it was considered an accessory structure. Accessory structures can be built legally up to 18 inches from the side and rear property lines, so the garage conformed to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Once the previous owner illegally converted the garage into apartments, Once the previous owner illegally converted the garage into apartments, it became an illegal second principal structure, illegal both because the use was not allowed and because it did not meet the required yard setbacks for principal structures. Since the garage is already within the required side and rear yards, it would be impractical to meet the yard requirements. Exhibit D, site survey, shows that the garage is closer than 18 inches from the property line because a small mechanical room was added when the garage was converted to apartments. This room will need to be removed regardless of the outcome of the variance request. Number two, the proposed variances will not serve as a special privilege because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure involved or to be used for occupancy thereof, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. The rear yard variance relates to the garage's location on the lot and will not serve as a special privilege to the owner, as the garage was illegally converted to a dwelling by the previous owner. The applicant bought the property in this condition and is attempting to bring the property into compliance with building safety and zoning codes. The lot width variance is also not a special privilege, as the lot was illegally subdivided when the previous owner sold six feet of the property's width to owners of 310 West California Avenue, creating non-conforming lot width. Major variance criteria number three, the variance request is not a result of the situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The applicant bought the property in its current condition and believed the property had all necessary approvals and inspections when the garage was converted to a dwelling. Staff estimates the garage was converted in 2011. It is not unreasonable for the applicant to think that the units were legal, since they have been in use for eight years. However, it is up to the purchaser of the property to confirm that all local, state, and federal regulations are being met prior to purchase, to make sure that it meets code. If the previous owner had submitted building plans to city staff to convert the garage to a dwelling, it would have been required to be built to meet building and zoning codes. The absence of permits indicates that the conversion was not legal and could have been discovered by the applicant prior to purchasing the property. While Mr. Gordon did not directly create the situation, he now seeks to rectify the variance requests. He could have performed more due diligence before making the purchase. Major variance criteria four, the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The variances requested will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The garage was built in 1992 and has been used as a dwelling since at least 2011. There are no complaints on record about the garage, and none of the testimony at the public hearing on August 21st or the correspondence received has indicated that the existing apartments have been problematic. The essential character of the neighborhood is that it contains mostly single-family homes, but also a fair amount of duplexes in some older apartment buildings. There are also numerous homes in the neighborhood on smaller lots, and more than half of the homes in the surrounding area are rental units. Major variance criteria number five, the variances will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. There are no complaints on record about the garage or its tenants. If the variances are approved, the owner will have to make significant renovations to bring the building up to code, which should reduce the likelihood of the property becoming a nuisance. Major variance criteria number six, the variances generally represent the minimum deviation of requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. The variance requests generally represent the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to allow the continued operation of the garage as a dwelling. The applicant requests variances that are necessary to allow the structure to remain in place with the exterior change required is removing the mechanical room addition. Case summary in the memo, as I'll try to summarize. The property is zoned R2. Dan Gordon requested a conditional use permit to allow a second principal structure in R2. The conditional use permit was granted with the condition that prior to occupancy, the garage will be inspected to ensure it meets all building code requirements for the establishment of a dwelling unit. The applicant will obtain a new certificate of occupancy for the garage structure. Mr. Gordon also requests two major variances to allow a principal structure to encroach 7.1 feet into the required rear yard and reduce the lot width required by 2.22 feet, which is 3.7% than what is required. The variances would allow the existing garage to be used as a dwelling, but with one less floor being used of the garage for living space. The rear yard and lot width variances do not serve as special privilege to the property owner, as there are special circumstances relating to the land. The property owner did not deliberately create this situation. The rear yard and lot width variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The rear yard and lot width variances will not create a nuisance. The rear yard and lot width variances represent a minimum deviation necessary from the zoning ordinance, as the variances would allow the garage to remain in place with no exterior The options for City Council. City Council has the following options for case ZBA 19 Major 6. The variance request for the rear yard, to one, approve the ordinance, two, approve the ordinance along with any conditions as are appropriate for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance, three, deny the ordinance. The same is said for Major variance 10, for lot width. At September 18th meeting, Zoning Board of Appeal voted five ayes and two nays to forward major variance ZBA 19 Major 6 to City Council with a recommendation to approve the request. ZBA then voted six ayes and one nay to forward major variance ZBA-19-Major-10 to City Council with a recommendation to approve the request. City staff likewise recommends approval.
Any questions for Lilly? Dean?
If the variance is not approved, do we have any estimate on what the economic loss is going to be to the owner to convert it back to a garage?
No.
I'm assuming it would have to be converted back to a garage if we don't approve it.
Yeah, absolutely. So the building would have to be inspected to make sure that it meets all building codes for a garage, and so there'd be a lot of building safety work and inspections and permits and a new certificate of occupancy needed even to convert it back to a garage.
Okay. Are any of the previous owners still around? I know the husband is deceased.
The other previous owner, the wife, I think, has moved to New Mexico.
Okay. Would the garage door be removed if the variance was approved?
That's up to, I think, the applicant and building safety, when they're reviewing it for necessary improvements for meeting either residential code or garage building code.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice.
I just can't get past that word "illegal." I can't get past it. I can't get past the word "illegal," and I can't get past the word "realtor," that the owner is a realtor. Having, I've never bought a house, I've never had to go through that, but I did have to show a house for a friend, and she had a garage, and I would take the people through the garage, and it was a garage. So I do not understand, unless this gentleman bought the property sight unseen, how he did not realize that that garage was not a garage.
Is there a representative of the owner here? Or is the owner, is this Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you be willing to answer questions?
I sure would.
Okay, thank you.
And I know that it's not your fault that it was illegally built and all that kind of stuff, but I find it hard to believe that you did not do a walkthrough and...
So when we were purchasing the house and going through it, the previous owner told us that the property was part of the Urbana rental, it was on the registry. So that gave us the impression that, you know, hey, this is really good, and we're in the, the apartments inside the garage were very nice, and they all had their own kitchenettes, they're full of grad students that loved it there, and so to us, it just seemed like a great, a great property.
Okay. And they were able to show you that they had permits and everything to build what they built? Or you didn't find out that it was illegal property until after the plumbing went out?
I had the property inspected by a professional inspector, and I did not, you know, didn't ask for permits. It's not something that I normally do when I buy properties. In fact, this was, this is the only rental property I bought in Urbana. But, sorry, what was the second part of your question?
So what I'm saying is that, so no one, you didn't, they led you to believe that this property had been properly inspected by the city, so on and so forth, and they had, it had been permitted?
That's what they led me to believe, yes.
Okay.
They being the owner?
The previous owner?
The previous owner, correct.
Can somebody tell me what happens to, is there a fine, or is there anything when there's a building that is found to be not permitted properly, and there's a lot of building and all that kind of stuff? Of course, the city attorney just walked out. Anybody, can you tell me something about that?
Well, once we, so if we find a building that's not up to code, like our building safety code, then we would require the owner to fix whatever building code violations there are. So in this case, we first learned about the violations when Mr. Gordon came to staff.
And so the previous owners are not going to be held accountable at all?
It's my understanding that the, you know, the amount of staff time and city resources that would be required to be put into going after the previous owner for what we'd get back would be not worth it.
Okay, I just want to say one more thing, and then, and this is why I can't get past the word "illegal," okay? Because in so many, you know, I lived, I've lived in other places. I was born and raised and graduated from high school and everything here, but I've lived in other cities. And in those other cities, a lot of times, tape at 11 would be that converted garage that, you know, killed five children and their mom. And they were usually also illegal conversions. And I worry about the people. So I just want to be honest about that.
I would like to say, I do as well. So as soon as we went down the path and found out this was illegal, I spoke with the zoning or whoever was in charge of this and asked them if I needed to have the residents leave, and they said we would let them stay out the rest of their leases because they were in school. So we let them do that, and as soon as their leases were up, they vacated, and we shut the place down, turned off the water and everything to the place, and it is, and had it inspected, so it's just...
Okay.
So we did that. I mean, we don't want the liability of hurting people.
Right. And I'm not saying that you do. But obviously, you don't, you wouldn't have applied for a variance. But the thing is, is that the variances, the variances that you're asking for, from my perspective, are illegal, because the building is illegal. What you're asking for is for us to say, okay, well, you know, everybody else has to go along and do this this way, and, you know, no fault of your own, I suppose, that you didn't know, you know?
Could we stick to questions now? And that's more discussion.
Yeah.
So hold those thoughts until you, until we have discussion.
Okay.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Gordon? Mary Ellis.
So I have two questions. My first question is, you said that you were told that the property was registered under the rental registration.
This is correct.
Did you look up on the website to see what the condition was and the inspections?
I did not. I didn't know that there was a website to look on.
So if the property has been inspected, there's a notification on our website that tells you what, you know, what items were found non-compliant and when they were fixed and so forth, so you didn't do that?
I did not.
If I remember correctly, Lilly, the plumbing and the electrical was illegally hooked up, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when you had the inspector, sir, come through, how was the electrical and plumbing found to be in compliance if it was illegally hooked up?
Do you want me, let me answer that, because I was there for the inspection. This property wasn't inspected until this year, and it was after we had already found out about the situation.
Let me clarify, I'm sorry. Before you purchased the property, you said that you had it professionally inspected?
Correct.
That is what I was talking about?
I would have to go and look back at that, but I don't recall it coming up as a fault or a failure or anything on that.
Okay, alright.
So I mean, so inside the garage, there's a breaker box, and so I'm just assuming that the power went down into the ground.
I guess I'm just a little shocked that you had a professional person come in and check out this place, and if there's a lot of code violations, why weren't those identified? Do you, did you have a list? Did they give you a list of codes that were violated?
I have a report. I don't recall what the list was. I see, I look at...
But did they tell you that there were code violations?
I look at reports all the time, so I don't, I just don't recall this one report, but I can pull it back up.
Yeah, as a quick point of clarification, I think when you get a property inspection and a housing inspection from the city of Urbana, they're meeting building code, but housing inspectors for a property, private property sales, don't usually have a lot of weigh-in or say about zoning ordinance and compliance issues.
This is correct.
I suppose, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I guess what I was going to say was, it sounded to me like if there are building code violations, that usually means health and safety violations, and I would expect somebody who inspected the property for a sale would notify the prospective owner that there were health and safety issues. So that's, I'm not going to belabor the point, but that's my...
Eric, and then Dennis.
Well, let me just get my head around this. You had somebody inspect for health and safety, soundness of the property, but that didn't, that inspection didn't cover issues of code compliance or whether the properties, the rental units, had been registered or so forth.
That's correct.
And as far as you could tell, the property was functionally and structurally sound, which was the point of that inspection.
Correct.
Dennis, and then Bill.
I'm going to kind of go back to a different question, and it's going to be for Lilly. The R2 zoning district specifically eliminates the possibility of having a duplex on the property. That's the guidance of R2, is that correct?
No. Sorry. It...
Isn't that required to be in R3 to have a duplex on a property?
By right.
By right.
So you can apply for a conditional use permit to have a duplex in R2, and I think you could see there is a small, but not insignificant, number of duplexes in West Urbana. In the West Urbana R2 area, it's 10% of the properties approximately are legally non-conforming duplexes. Some of them do have conditional use permits.
And historically, I don't know, maybe 10 or 12 years ago, I can't remember now, the Winter Neighborhood made a very specific attempt to downzone a large section of their streets to R2 from R3. Is that correct, or R4?
Various different multi, and it was about 30 years ago.
30 years ago?
Yeah, so the downtown to campus plan had, in 1991, City Council passed an ordinance to the veto of a mayor, which then was overridden. It's very interesting. But there was a large swath, I mean, over 100 parcels that were downzoned, and the city actually faced several lawsuits afterwards, and it's an interesting case. That plan was then superseded by the comprehensive plan in 2005. We have more recent public input and more recent land use plan.
But those, the downzoning in the Winter Neighborhood and those swaths of parcels didn't change, they weren't upzoned again, they remain R2, is that correct?
Correct.
Is this street one of those that's in that parcel that was downzoned?
Absolutely.
So there... So there was an intent in the neighborhood for years, or you might even say decades, that the intent was that they were looking for single-family residences rather than duplexes, except whether there were very special circumstances allowing a conditional permit to be allowed. So it was well-known for decades that R2 had actually been achieved through neighborhood, uh, neighborhood work and attention and attention, and, um, even, um, so, so much support that it, you were just telling us that it, uh, was passed over the veto of the mayor to make the downzoning a significant aspect of that neighborhood.
Um, 30 years ago.
Yes, 30 years ago. And, um, I wonder then, are we thinking that the neighborhood has completely changed its mind? Hasn't come forward to make any changes to my awareness? So I'm just, I'm saying that as background, um, that's why this particular case becomes really problematic for me because, uh, the intent of the entire neighborhood was codified 30 years ago after some diligent and hard work to make this an R2 neighborhood whenever possible.
Do you want my response or is that a question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to confirm that this was specifically an area and a block that was downzoned at one time by the rest of the neighborhood?
30 years ago.
30 years ago. Okay, well, 30 years is a good 30 years sometimes, you know?
Yeah.
And sometimes things don't change that fast.
Bill.
So was this already, this property was registered in our rental, rental registration program?
It was.
Okay, for how many units?
Uh, for just a single-family home rented.
Okay, so the single-family home that's there isn't a duplex?
It is not a duplex. Next door is.
And you're calling this a duplex because you were adding, you, the conditional use is for a second principal use?
We wanted to try to make sure we were following the intent of the density of the area. And so we're applying a stricter interpretation of the zoning ordinance to make sure that we're following the intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, that particular two duplex, um, uh, that duplex is, that density, it has the same intent and density, um, impact and density of what we're applying it for.
Okay, to me, a duplex is a building with two units. I think that's how it's defined in our zoning ordinance.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Um, so whenever something's not defined in our zoning ordinance, we have to rely on the most, um, on the closest use to, um, to that use. So we don't have a definition that says, um, multifamily, two units or, uh, two dwelling units on one lot, but we do have a duplex. So in this case, um, the most close definition we have is duplex. And it's not perfect. I don't like calling two units on one lot a duplex, but it's the best choice we have in this situation.
Okay, and for the, uh, the FAR, um, variance that we don't have to approve, how much over, what, do you remember what's, how many square feet are allowed in the garage?
Uh, yeah, so it, the original request was 765 square feet over the maximum floor area ratio that, uh, floor area that's allowed on this lot size. Um, when the FAR variance was denied, that restricts one floor of the garage space, which is 225 square, I mean, 825 square feet.
So the total residential space that would be allowed there if this was approved is, is what, 225?
Um, uh, 825 square feet, which would be one floor of the garage.
Oh, I see, it was 765 over, so there'd be 825. So how, what proportion of residential space would that leave? Like 50% of what's there now?
50%, one floor.
And then for these other houses that are duplexes and apartment buildings on that same block that's completely zoned R2, what happens if one of those burns down?
It can only be rebuilt as a single-family home by right, but then there's, uh, you could apply for a duplex, um, or a variance for, to, for rebuilding, depending on, everybody has the, the right to apply for a variance.
So, okay, so it sounds to me like the intent in the downzoning was so that when those houses eventually reached their, the end of their useful life, um, they would be rebuilt as single-family, which this vacant property was built in 1991, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions, thanks.
Mary Alice?
Um, Bill, you stole my question. But, uh, I, I did want to say, just to reiterate, that a, a standard lot is 60 by 120, is that correct?
There's no standard lot.
Well, in order to build a single-family residence home, what is this, what is the size that is required?
Yeah, the minimum lot width is 60 feet and the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. So 60 by 100 would be the smallest.
60 by 100. Okay, so, so legally, just to reiterate that point, if the property unfortunately burned down, the only thing by right, you wouldn't be able to build anything by right on that property, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. Um, in, in the zoning ordinance, we, I think we recognize that we have a lot of older neighborhoods that don't meet the minimum lot size. Um, so I don't know exactly where it is, but it says something to the effect of, um, the, a non-conforming lot due to size or width doesn't preclude you from putting up a use that would be allowed on that lot. So essentially, if the only thing that's non-conforming is the lot, you can still put a use that's allowed in that zone up as long as it meets setbacks, FAR, parking, all of that. So you could have a lot that's 50, 50 by 50, and if you can fit a house on it, you could do it.
So that would allow for one residence to be built on that lot, is that correct?
It would. Um, or in the R2 district, you could get a conditional use permit to do a duplex.
Okay. So, um, one of the things you talked about was the building of the garage and the setback. So the building of the garage was 18 inches in terms of the rear setback. And the, I believe it's 10 feet is for a principal unit, is that correct?
Yes.
So why does the difference exist? What is the purpose of having a 10-foot setback for a principal unit versus 18 inches for?
Um, that's a good question. I think we'd probably have to look at when, uh, when those setback rules were put in place. I think part of it has to do with generally garages. We do restrict the size of garages and we restrict the height of garages. Um, you know, they can only be 15 feet tall or I think the max, yeah, the max you can build is 800 square feet. So you're not going to have a, uh, a hulking house that's 18 inches from the property line, but it's okay if you have a garage there because it's substantially smaller. I think that's part of the intent.
How tall is the existing garage?
Approximately 22 to 23 feet, I'm not quite sure.
Well, it, when it was built, it met the zoning ordinance requirement, so it would be at most 15 feet.
Sorry, yes. Okay. Um, those are all my questions for now. I'd like to make a motion, if that's allowed.
I do, I want to check if there's any more questions. Any more questions for Lily or Mr. Gordon? Bill?
Um, when we do the rental registration, is there a certain time of the year where they, everyone registers? Is it an annual cycle or is it, as you, uh, if, I mean, I assume if you haven't rented something and you want to start renting at any time during the year, you have to submit the, um, application? But if it's a renewal, is, does it renew on a particular date?
Yeah, absolutely. So in October, that's when we start the renewal process for...
Okay, so it would have been October before he would have had to renew this if everything had been done properly. And then Kevin just said that the minimum square, or maximum square foot for a garage is 800 square feet?
Uh, I'm going by memory, but I'm pretty confident in that memory.
This one, this one wasn't over the maximum when it was built?
Um, it would not have been to get a certificate of occupancy. Um, I don't think we have actual plans on file, so we don't know the specific dimensions, though.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Um, I want to ask about the zoning board of appeals Plan C-03, which was a request for the conditional use permit. That didn't come to us, correct? That was decided?
Nope, condition, yeah, conditional use permits don't come to council. They are decided by zoning board of appeals, which is...
So that's, is that a done deal and we're not going to be able to comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
And so that allows a second dwelling. Appar, zoning board of appeal is already like determined that it's appropriate to have a second dwelling. But if there's going to be a second dwelling, it's going to have to be compliant.
Yes.
And the problem is it's not.
Well, no, the request is to, um, establish the garage as compliant af- after meeting all building codes. So, um, the conditional use permit, yes, is, is approved. The variance requested tonight would be required to, to use the garage.
Yeah.
Apartment, after meeting all applicable building codes.
Yeah. It's, it's very troubling when, and of course, one appreciates the zoning board of appeal for making important decisions. And yet, probably the most important decision doesn't come before the city council. We only get to nibble on the side of the issue, but we don't actually address the actual issue. And this, I think, is a problem.
Any further questions? You had a motion, Mary Alice?
I do. I have a motion to defeat ordinance number 2019-10057, an ordinance approving a major variance for the rear yard of 308 West California, ZBA case number ZBA 2019, major 06.
Okay, and I'll step forward and second that.
Okay, so that is, um, different from what is written here. So it's an ordinance defeating a major variance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And seconded by Dennis?
Hmm, yeah.
Discussion. Uh, Eric?
So I was there 30 some odd years ago. I was part of that and our house was one of those that was downzoned to R2. And that was a tremendous fight. I remember waking up at 3:00 in the morning. The nightmare was that our house was surrounded by massive apartment buildings on all sides. And, uh, that was a real thing. I'm trying to think about this case. I, I guess one of the things that I believe about this case is that the history is so idiosyncratic. And I hope very unique. So I hardly believe that it is a precedent for almost anything. Um, I think the real question in my mind is would granting these side variances and the rear variance, uh, would they degrade the quality of the neighborhood? One of the things that I'm sensitive to here, um, is that the petitioner has bought this property and is going through processes to make it better than it was before he bought it. And, um, I'm really troubled, I'll just say this frankly, I'm troubled. He may have, you may have, sir, wished that you had done a little more diligence on this, on our, our, uh, but I, I'm very troubled by attacks on Mr. Gordon's integrity on this. I can easily see anyone walking into this in the way that he did. Um, the, uh, I'm going to vote against your motion, Mary Alice, uh, because I truly don't see that, um, I, I think that converting this from what had been three apartments in the garage to one, to, you know, what I think is not a very large, you know, uh, variance in terms of two feet here, seven feet there, on one property in a neighborhood that is, has both, uh, has, yes, single-family, but also duplexes. I think, I think it's all right. I think it is, um, uh, and I don't think it creates a, um, I don't think it creates precedent for anything else. I think we're just, uh, uh, in this case, inviting appropriate investment into the neighborhood.
Any further comment? Mary Alice?
So I respectfully disagree with my dear friend Eric. Um, I think that we have setbacks for reasons. Um, and, uh, there is a difference between setbacks for prop, main properties for, um, and, and garages. And 70% change in that is significant. That's why it's a major variance. Uh, 70% goes from, so there are seven feet encroachment on a 10-feet setback. That's big. Um, and it is not necessarily setting precedent, but it is setting an example for other areas, for other potential, um, properties. Um, and frankly, this is a small lot. This is too small for the structures that are on there. Um, and so for that reason, I, I encourage you to vote against this. I think that it will set up an opportunity for other people who, um, perhaps want to look at putting in a second principal unit and ask for these changes. Now, in terms of building something, I mean, that would be a question. Would we allow somebody to build a second principal unit three feet from the rear yard? I, I mean, I pose that to council. And I would say, no, we wouldn't allow it.
Further comment? Dennis and then Bill.
When I was younger, I lived in Phoenix and there were many converted garages. Some, um, grandma houses or whatever, built in backyards. And, um, mother-in-law cottages, whatever, right? And, uh, and I lived in, I rented one for a while and, um, the, and shared a very difficult relationship with my tenant. So, um, okay, that's just, you know, but I know these, these exist. However, uh, I'm thinking about my own neighborhood, the Easterbanna neighborhood. We also petitioned to downsize numerous blocks on the west side of our historic Easterbanna Neighborhood Association area, successfully about, I don't know, 20 years ago, I think it was, or more, 18 years ago. And, um, and we would be, and of course, it was established, we even became a neighborhood association because of a cottage that had been torn down. And also, all of a sudden, it became a five-plex. And so it seemed, and, and that side-plex, that five-plex building encroached in two different directions toward the street. And we couldn't believe it that it had been allowed. And we didn't find out about it until the foundations were built. And already by that time, oh, it's too late. No, this one, we just have to accept this one. So, um, we did work with the city staff to downzone several sections of our neighborhood. And if there was an attempt to try to get around the downzoning in my neighborhood, I would fight it very hard. Because we really believe it's important to not overdensify the neighborhood so that it still feels like a community and not a complex of apartments, which it was, could easily have become. So, um, you know, really, I'm going to be having, uh, some qualms about walking past a five-story or four-story apartment building at the corner of Vine and Green Street that's still yet to be built. But these things, these changes, and they're incremental, one lot at a time, uh, do eventually change the, the nature of a neighborhood significantly. And, um, you know, I'm not going to be able to understand or necessarily speak for all the Western, West Urbana neighborhood people, but I sympathize with them. And I can see that these variances that are being discussed are only out of sync by a few feet here or there. And it's not unrec, it's not, uh, impossible to say, well, you know, let's just give it to this guy. And, you know, we'll just live with it, because it, you know, I mean, after all, the building's already there. the building's already there, and he's going to change it and make it even better. But the principle is that if you really want to preserve a neighborhood in the way that you find it to be enjoyable to live in it, you're going to have to make some strong stands for the principles that you want to uphold. And so, I could see how this could go either way, and I could probably live with it going either way. But I'm going to support Mary Alice Wu and the Western Urbana neighborhood in this instance, because I believe they're trying to maintain the integrity of their community in a way that they understand is important to them.
Bill?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think there's anything that Mr. Gordon, I can't fault Mr. Gordon for anything. I mean, he, it wasn't his fault that this was built this way. He probably could have done more due diligence, but that's, you know, that's in his court. There's, there's no major variance criteria called economic hardship, though, so, you know, that's not a criteria for allowing a variance, because it's going to cost some money, or it's going to, maybe somebody's not going to be able to make enough money, as much money, or even enough money to justify the investment. We have zoning for orderly development of the city. We have R2, this has been zoned for a long time, and there's been a tent behind that. And by granting these waivers, it goes against the R2 philosophy, it goes against the R2, you know, pattern of development. I don't know exactly why there's ten-foot setback, but I can imagine next to an alley, if we get enough complaints about garbage trucks when you're fifteen, twenty feet from the street, imagine the garbage truck going down the alley couldn't be pleasant for the tenants there. So, that's just one thing. And looking at the pictures, I see a whole pole full of power lines hanging right over the house. I don't know if there's a greater chance of fire or something, if a transformer blows, if you're within ten feet of the power, of the property line or the alley. So, yeah, I'm going to support Mary Alice's motion to defeat the ten-foot setback. I mean, this is actually a pretty large house. It's bigger than my house, and I have a three-bedroom house. It's just amazing that this got as far as it did. And I'm sorry for Mr. Gordon if this fails, but I think that's the only logical thing to do with, and I think it does set precedence. We saw three zoning cases, or three, three conditional uses go before ZBA and R3 for second principal use, and then, all of a sudden, we get a text amendment proposed that we should allow it by right in all of R3. So, you know, a few conditional use cases that pass, and all of a sudden, staff says, well, you know, we aren't, this is the way that development's occurring, and this is the way we've been enforcing it, so let's just pass a text amendment. So, I, I'm sorry, but I'm going to vote against the variance.
And I think Sharice wanted to continue her thoughts.
Basically, Mr. Gordon, I just want to say I'm so sorry that you're having to go through this, that's for sure. But I do go back to where I said I just can't get past that word "illegal," even though you had nothing to do with that. And I applaud your willingness to improve what the illegal thing is, but it was still an illegal, illegal building, illegal expansion, illegal, well, what they say in the, they call it in the zoning ordinance, nonconformity, or something like that, to that effect or something, isn't it? Lily, something like that.
Illegally nonconforming?
I'm just, no, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, the building is not being used for what it was, for what it was built. And it's unfortunate that it was, you're, you know, trying to get something repaired or whatever that brought all of this to light. I am hoping that anyone that's watching this right now would think twice before they decide that they're going to turn the doghouse into a den, or something like that. It's just, you have to go through the city. Everyone has to do it. And it's an unfortunate turn of events for you, sir. I'm sure that maybe, in the future, if you decide, maybe there's a way that you can do it correctly. You know, that's what, that's what I'm hoping, is that maybe, you know, there'll be a way that it'll, they'll be, you comply, there'll be inspections, there'll be safety, all this kind of stuff, and you would be able to provide housing for grad students, or however you were going to use, you know, man cave, however you would convert it into that, or convert a building into that. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Further comment? Motion on the floor is to defeat a major variance in ZBA case number 2019-MAG06. It's ordinance number 2019-10-057. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2019-10-058, an ordinance approving a major variance for lot width at 308 West California Avenue, ZBA case 2019-MAG-10. Did you have further comments, Lily?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to defeat.
I'll second.
Motion to defeat is made by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Eric?
What is the implication of defeating the variance for lot width? Does the whole lot have to be vacated?
No, they'd just have to remove the second dwelling units, which they'd be doing anyway. So, they need to take all the apartments out of the garage.
But the garage stands. Does the mechanical room get removed?
Yes.
So, the garage stands without the mechanical room attached, and the apartments within are removed? Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mary Alice?
I would just like to say something in terms of the people who were in support of this. There were several letters that were sent to ZBA. I think there was four or five people who were in support of it. And the majority of people, if I can summarize, were in support because they felt that the neighborhood was against students. And so, I hope, at least from my perspective, I know that Esther Pat is, has worked for the tenants' union for a long time, has worked hard for tenants' rights. Students, rental units bring diversity into our neighborhood, and that's very important. And I am not against this, because I don't want to have more students in our neighborhood, absolutely not. That is, we wouldn't be the rich, cultural neighborhood that we are without students and without tenants. I have only three single-family residences left on my block, in the 800 block of Nevada. The rest of them are all rentals. The second point was, was that people didn't want to be living in these big houses, they didn't want to live in the group houses, they wanted the opportunity to live in one-bedroom, two-bedroom houses. So, I can tell you that for three months, on the 800 block of Nevada Street, there were two two-bedroom and one one-bedroom unit available for three months, there were signs out in the yard. In the 700 block, there have been multiple one-bedroom units available. There is housing out there, and I encourage students to take up that housing and to move into our neighborhood. And there is certainly a variety, there's efficiencies, there are beautiful renovated properties. So, it's not that I'm against tenants or students, I just wanted to make that very clear in my discussion about the defeat. And I probably came at the owner a little hard, I apologize for that. I agree with my city council members that this is not something that you created. You didn't make this illegal. The question is, is it appropriate for our neighborhood? And that's really the question that we're trying to address here, so those are my comments.
And I will piggyback onto that. There were compelling messages in the correspondence sent to the ZBA on both sides. People want to maintain the character of the neighborhood, the quality of the neighborhood, the diversity of the neighborhood, and yet, provide many different types of housing. And there's going to be a greater community conversation about this and much more when we begin the complete rewrite of the comprehensive plan. The last one was done in 2005, we're long overdue for updating the comp plan, and this will be an opportunity for all these different viewpoints to really be discussed thoroughly in a community setting, and really, we can talk about neighborhoods of the future, today and of the future. So, for everyone who is passionate about this topic, I encourage you to, you know, write down your thoughts, keep them, and you'll be given an opportunity to discuss this starting next year. So, anyway, we have a motion on the floor for defeating the variance. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
No.
Hazen?
No.
Hersi?
This is for defeating, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That is four yeses, three noes. That motion passes. Thank you very much. And now, we turn to cannabis.
I could have used this before, Mr. Brown.
And before us, we have ordinance number 2019-10-059, which is an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance. It's the cannabis tax amendments, Plan Case 2385-T19, and Kevin Garcia will be presenting the staff report.
Okay, good evening. I will try and be a little bit brief here, since I covered a lot of this material at the committee of the whole meeting several weeks back. But just to recap some of that, and then to update you all on where we are at, and then to ask for an ordinance to be approved. So, to recap, this is a request for an amendment to Articles Two and Five of the zoning ordinance to add definitions and establish provisions for non-medical adult-use cannabis businesses. The Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act will take effect on January 1st, or on January 1st, it will make it legal for adults 21 and older to possess and consume cannabis for non-medical purposes. The Act grants local governments the zoning authority, or the authority to adopt reasonable zoning controls to regulate the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis business establishment operations, including minimum distance limitations between cannabis business establishments and locations it deems sensitive. On September 3rd of this year, the city council passed ordinance 2019-08047, which established a 3% municipal cannabis retailer's occupancy, or occupation tax, which would apply to all non-medical cannabis sales in Urbana. Then, on September 19th, the plan commission held a public hearing on the proposed text amendment. Ultimately, the plan commission continued the case, and they recommended that staff consider establishing minimum distance buffers between dispensaries and K through 12 schools, and between cultivation centers and residential areas. At the October 10th meeting of the plan commission, staff presented an updated text amendment that included minimum distances. Specifically for dispensaries, we suggested a, using the same hundred-foot buffer that is used to separate liquor stores from schools. And for cultivation centers, we suggested a 300 buffer, 300-foot buffer from residentially zoned parcels. After discussion, the plan commission accepted staff's recommendations, which are presented in the memo, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to city council. At both plan commission meetings, there were no members of the public that came to speak. Just a brief reminder, the state defines six types of cannabis businesses: craft growers, cultivation centers, dispensaries, infusers, processors, and transporters. Each is described briefly on page three of the council memo. It's also, they're also described in full in Exhibit A of the packet. To summarize the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, Article Two would add a general definition called cannabis business, which would list each type of cannabis business permitted by the state, and refer back to the act, the state act, for specific definitions. Article Five would add distance requirements that mirror the requirements found in the act, and then also add minimum distances for K through 12 schools, for dispensaries, and then for distance from residential zones for cultivation centers and craft growers. For a little more on that, so, the city and the state of Illinois, who we refer back to, the city requires at least 100 feet of separation between liquor stores and schools, so the proposed amendment would not allow dispensaries within 100 feet of any elementary school, middle school, or high school. The plan commission also suggested that dispensaries be allowed as a conditional use in the B2 neighborhood business arterial district, which would also align cannabis dispensaries with liquor stores, as liquor stores are allowed in the B2 district as well. Plan commission had some concerns that the cultivation centers could emit odors that could be unpleasant for neighborhoods, or for neighbors, so they suggested that a minimum distance be established between cultivation centers and residential zones. We did some research and suggested a minimum distance of 300 feet, which was based on regulations for cultivation centers in Aurora, Colorado, which was highlighted in a planning magazine article as a best practice, community in regulating cannabis businesses. Staff also suggested adding language to require cultivation centers to mitigate odors using air filters, scrubbers, or other methods. Excuse me. In general, the proposal is to allow dispensaries, craft growers, and infusers as permitted uses in more intense business zones and industrial zones, and then to allow cultivation centers, processors, and transporters as permitted uses in industrial zones. In addition, we, cultivation centers are recommended as a, as either a conditional or special use in the AG agriculture district. We did do some more research based on comments that we received, or questions at the committee of the whole, and it appears that we should be safe to either require conditional use permits or special use permits to establish distance requirements if we so choose.
And that's what's listed as option two or three in your packet.
Thank you. Just briefly, the proposed text amendment would align with several goals of the comprehensive plan, including enhancing Urbana's commercial areas, developing a diversified and broad stable tax base, and promoting new and expanded business opportunities. Okay, so, I have a series of maps that might be hard to see, I can zoom in on them if you would like. I don't need to go through each of these individually. I will touch on the dispensaries and cultivation centers, but not on all of the other, all of the other ones. So, craft growers, you see in this map there, they'd be So craft growers, you see in this map there, they'd be proposed, let's see. Yeah, so proposed as permitted uses in the higher business zones in industrial districts and as a conditional use in the agriculture district. I do want to note, Urbana has very few agriculture, agriculturally-zoned properties. However, there are quite a few large agriculturally-zoned properties right on the border of Urbana, and I'll talk about that in a minute when we discuss cultivation centers. Proposed locations for infusers, pretty similar, mostly permitted in the higher business zones. I think we talked last time that smaller versions would be allowed in the B3U and the B4 district, as well as in the industrial zones. Sorry, I said I wouldn't go through all these, but it's going fast, so I'm going through all of these. Proposed locations for processors and transporters, this one's a little easier. It's just industrial zones as a permitted use. I think that one, that's following the order of the exhibits in the staff memo. I can talk about that in a minute. Proposed zones for cannabis cultivation centers. So I made a map, which is probably easier to see in your packets, and hopefully I can zoom in a bit. But essentially, the yellow areas are all residentially-zoned parcels in Urbana and in Champaign and in the county, because we wanted to be good neighbors. And if there happened to be residential zones right outside of our borders, we wouldn't want to allow, say, a cultivation center right next to a neighborhood. So we're proposing to add that to the text amendment. But what this shows is, in the yellow, the residential zones with the 300-foot buffer, which is proposed. The gray areas are areas, and this includes some areas in the county, because as I just mentioned, there are areas zoned for agriculture that are right outside of our borders, which could potentially be annexed into the city for a cultivation center use, so I wanted to include those here. But the gray areas, as proposed by the Plan Commission, would not be allowed because they fall within the 300-foot buffer. The updated recommendation that we're making, staff, is to require a conditional or special use permit for any of those areas for cultivation or craft growing that are within that 300-foot buffer. What that would do is, it would allow more flexibility to allow cultivation centers in more areas, but it would give us a lot more oversight, so we could, for instance, if you had a large parcel, for instance, this parcel that my hand's over right here, that might not be the best one, it's kind of close to residential. One of these on the east side of High Cross Road, they're large parcels, so the parcel boundary touches that 300-foot buffer, but with a special use or a conditional use permit, you could approve a site plan that puts the building on the far east side of that parcel, or at least outside of that 300-foot buffer, so that it's well away from residential uses. So that's why we're proposing a special use or conditional use permit within that zone. And during discussion, I'd be happy to zoom in on any areas you might be interested in. Similarly, for dispensaries, Plan Commission recommended the, oh, I think I'm missing. I don't know, they're just hard to see. Sorry, this map's a little, I had to copy and paste, so it might not be that easy to read. It's better on the big screen. So this includes school parcels, those K through 12 school parcels with 100-foot buffers, and shows the areas that would be excluded based on those buffers. Also based on, there's a Numed buffer. Numed is applying for a non-medical cannabis dispensary license, so assuming that they get that license, that would be the buffer around the Numed, the Numed store. Just for a little bit more information, the number of dispensaries that would be allowed in each region, the state has broken up, has been broken up into different BLS regions, which are Bureau of Labor Statistics regions. Our region is the Champaign-Urbana region. It is Champaign County, Ford County, and Payette County. Champaign has the vast majority of the people within that region, so I imagine most or all of the dispensaries would be located in Champaign County. But in 2020, there could be up to three dispensaries allowed in the region. By 2021, there could be five. And then after 2021, the state could end up licensing up to nine and possibly 10 dispensaries in the region, based on how population is broken down at that time. So the proposed text. I don't like putting up slides with a lot of text, but this is a text amendment, so that's what I'm putting up. There are a couple, there are a few different options on the second page, but just briefly, as I mentioned, the proposed ordinance would add a definition for cannabis business, so that includes all of the definitions, or all of the businesses that the state defines. Under Regulation of Medical Cannabis, we'd just change the name to Regulation of Cannabis Uses. We'd also strike the first paragraph, which seems unnecessary and talks about how medical cannabis uses might injure the general welfare of the community. We have no evidence to suggest that it has or that it will, so we're proposing striking that. And then just a couple of small reference changes to reflect the state law, the medical law. Okay, this one's a little bit better. So for the, for Section B, cannabis business uses shall only be allowed in locations that are consistent with Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. This is the same as what was presented in your packet. I've moved the options to the next page of this slide. I did want to point out that Jim Simon, the city attorney, thought it would be best to explicitly call out that the dispensaries we're talking about in this section would be non-medical dispensaries, so that would just clean this up. So just inserting "non-medical" before dispensary here would clean this section up. Otherwise, it's the same as recommended by the Plan Commission. And then, as we've mentioned a few times here, so there are various options, and these, upon that further analysis, mapping analysis that we did, and as I talked about a little bit earlier, we noticed that certain properties within 300 feet of residential zones might be appropriate in certain cases for cultivation centers or craft growers, so to not exclude them outright, which is what Option 1 would do, we could use Option 2 or Option 3, which would require a conditional use permit for those cultivation and craft growers within 300 feet of residentially-zoned lots.
Or a special use permit, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I said it in my head.
Can you, for the public, explain the difference in process between conditional and special use?
I can, yeah. And if they were paying attention, they heard about conditional use permits, in the last case, too. So a conditional use permit is a special zoning approval that goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals for ultimate approval. And a special use permit is similar, but it goes through the Plan Commission and then through City Council for ultimate approval. There are some other minor differences, but that's essentially what the differences are. That really concludes, well, I guess I'll give you your options first. Okay, the City Council has the following options in this case. You can approve the text amendment as presented herein, approve the text amendment as modified by specific changes, or deny the text amendment. The Plan Commission voted unanimously, 7 to 0, to recommend approval of the text amendment. Staff concurs with the Plan Commission, except that we suggest using either Option 2 or Option 3 in front of you, so use a, require a conditional use or a special use for cultivation centers within 300 feet of residential zones. And also, we recommend inserting that phrase "non-medical" before dispensary in Section So that concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions you may have.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. So in the Aurora best practices, were there any, do they have any buffers of distance for dispensaries? We were just talking, the only thing you brought that up about was the cultivation center buffers, I think.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I was focused on the cultivation centers because Plan Commission asked us to look at our liquor requirements for dispensaries specifically. If I'm remembering correctly, I think Aurora's was just a blanket 300 feet for any cannabis business, but I can't recall that off the top of my head.
Okay, and we, the proposal isn't for any kind of additional buffer except for the 100 feet from schools for dispensary, right?
Correct.
That's what the state requires? And for, in our liquor code, are there any buffer distances for liquor stores?
Well, the only thing we do is refer to the state code, and the state code requires a buffer of 100 feet from schools and churches and other military installations. It seems like it was written quite a while ago.
Nothing, nothing to say you couldn't have a liquor store next to a house?
No.
And then for residential, the maps you made in, using residential, I mean, we allow residential in B4, like in the Black North here, it's going to be all residential, but that's not included in the maps. We're just considering residential zone districts, right?
Yeah, residential zones and B3U and MOR, because those are kind of mixed use, which allow residential. But, yeah, you can put a house.
So there's nothing to say you couldn't have a cultivation center next to a big apartment complex in a B4 lot?
Let's look at the map.
It's not, I don't think.
Yeah, I know you're asking technically, could you do that?
It's not very likely. And it's also not very likely we're going to have a cultivator.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not zoned like that either. I think by design. That's how we designed it. We didn't include downtown, so.
Okay. I guess it's more of a discussion than questions, I'll save that. Oh, and I emailed you earlier, and you explained that this text amendment wasn't necessarily to deal with medical cannabis uses, but as long as we're at it, the Section 513A2 that talks about no medical cannabis dispensary shall be located within 1,000 feet of public or private schools and all that, and gives a state law reference, that state law reference has been repealed as of this year, July, so I'm going to make a recommendation that we just strike that. There's no state restrictions on medical cannabis dispensary, and it wouldn't make sense to me to have different rules for medical cannabis dispensary as opposed to, or more restrictive rules for medical cannabis dispensary than we do for regular cannabis dispensaries. If anything, they should be less restrictive, but I'd say just, I'd recommend we strike that Section A2 on, there's no page numbers. Oh, Page 5, yeah, sorry, I wrote over it.
And I think that would be wholly consistent with the intent of the text amendment that drafted these regulations. We wanted to match the minimum requirements of the state and be no more restrictive, so I think that would match the spirit.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I've magically come up with three questions. All right, my first question is, and it has to do with what Bill was just talking about. So just for clarification, Bill, you were talking about A1 and A2 referencing, I believe, the same statute, but different parts of the statute. Are we striking the 1,000 feet and the 2,500 feet, because that's no longer relevant?
Well, they didn't actually change the first one in A1. They didn't, the state didn't change that, so the medical cannabis cultivation centers still have different rules than the regular cannabis cultivation centers. But for dispensaries, they did strike the, they repealed the distance requirements.
So that kind of goes into some of the conversation at the Plan Commission, and they were talking about the locations, the potential locations because of Numed. I think that the answers change here. They were talking about the fact that because of the 1,500-foot buffer, this is on Page 2 of the Plan Commission, it said that, and Numed's location, that another dispensary could not locate in downtown Urbana or Lincoln Square Mall. So that, now, if we strike that, that's no longer relevant. Is that correct, or is that not correct?
No, no, that's referring to the new Numed, non-medical cannabis dispensary that we imagine they'll, they'll put in there.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. And then somebody was talking about the craft growers and where they would likely want to be, so here's a silly question. Can craft growers grow indoors? Is that legal?
Yes, that's where they must grow.
They must grow, they're required to grow.
They can't, they can't grow anything that's visible from outside.
But they cannot sell without a dispensary license in addition to the craft growers' license?
Correct. Well, sell to the public, yes.
Sell to the public. So that means if somebody wants to set up shop in downtown Urbana and Numed has granted the second dispensary for recreational marijuana, then they would not be able to do that in downtown Urbana. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. My second question has to do with the 100 feet from the schools. Seems pretty close to the schools. I mean, we're talking thousands of feet here with all the other stuff, the dispensaries, and all of a sudden, we've shrunk down to 100. So is the 100 there mandated by the state law, or is that something that is up for discussion?
It's up for discussion, and the state law mandates zero, because it doesn't mandate anything. But the Plan Commission felt it was defensible to match what we require for liquor stores. And since we require 100-foot buffer for liquor stores, it seemed to make sense to have the same requirement for dispensaries. They did have, if you look at the Plan Commission minutes, there was some discussion about setting a buffer larger than that, but they couldn't really come up with anything that would seem like more of an arbitrary decision to make the buffer larger.
So in order to have dispensaries, I'm just trying to go to what's permitted by right in terms of zoning, because I'm wondering what schools that would impact. So if we do dispensaries are B2, B3, B3U, B4, B4E, I don't know if we have any public schools that are within 100 feet of those zoning. Is that correct?
There are very, there are very, very few. So if you look on Exhibit K, and in your packet, it might be better, but, so the schools are these light blue parcels, so you see there's not, there aren't really green parcels, which are where we're proposing they be permitted. There really aren't green parcels that are within 100 feet of the school parcels. There are a couple down here on Windsor Road. It's really not, yeah, there's not a whole lot. And, yeah, so, sorry, Cunningham Children's Home would knock out a couple of those, I think, that are across the street.
Yeah, right on North Cunningham.
All right, my third question has to do with B2, which is the neighborhood business and arterial roads requiring conditional use instead of a special use. I'm wondering what the thought process is behind that.
Oh, there really is no thought process behind conditional versus special that's, other than it being a carryover from the exhibits that we had put together previously, when we thought that conditional use permits would be all that would be available to us. But you could easily change every, you know, every C in the use table on Page 7 of your memo. You could change all the Cs to Ss, and that would be consistent. Well, that, yes.
Okay, all right. I will let other people. I will let other people ask questions.
Any other questions? Dennis?
I'm just gonna bring this up because I had asked it, and I had made some people in the Lurman neighborhood aware, but I noticed that one of the green dispensary locations was actually the very footprint of the Lurman Neighborhood Community Garden, and the reason is because I was told that that's a B3 zoning, so that would be included in all the B3 zonings that are listed here. And realizing that this property currently is owned by the city, and it would be unlikely that the city would be promoting a dispensary at the Lurman Garden, and it would also be impossible for somebody to cultivate in the garden a marijuana patch, because that would be a public patch. I guess that my concern for the Lurman neighborhood is satisfied that it's unlikely unless there was a sale of that property, and that would be something that might happen in the future, but it might happen so late in the future that it might not, it might be moot, and I guess we would deal with it at the time.
Any other questions? Sharice?
I just need some clarification, too, on conditional and special uses. What I see in the zoning ordinance, conditional uses as designated by table V1 or whatever are not permitted by right in the various zoning districts, which is the same thing that says about special uses at the very beginning. So could you give me some clarification on what's so different about one and/or the other? What's the difference between them?
Well, the big difference is, as I mentioned, the conditional use permit goes to the ZBA for approval. The special use permit goes through plan commission and city council for approval. They are similar. Many communities have one or the other, but not both, but we have both.
Okay, so the conditional use goes through the ZBA, and the special use goes through us?
Correct.
Planning commission.
Planning commission, and then us. Okay. And is one harder, more harder to attain than the other, so to speak?
What'd you learn tonight?
Yeah, I guess so.
It's an additional level of review.
So, so each, a special use permit and a conditional use permit each have their own criteria that need to be evaluated by the respective board, commission, and council. So I think you'd have to take a look at those criteria and weigh them against the proposed use to really determine which one would be harder to obtain.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Any other technical questions? Jared?
I have a question, not for Kevin, but for our public safety chief, chief please. Chief Brent, I was just curious, we've gone through a lot of discussions on this stuff, but haven't heard any chime in from the police department about what we're proposing, what we're thinking about. I'm sure you discussed with Kevin and everybody these locations, these distances, and those kinds of things. I'm sure you've been doing research into other communities where these things have been approved and seen what issues may have come up with other folks. I'm just curious to pick your brain quickly for anything you may have seen that we may be overlooking, or anything that you think we may be doing wrong, or if we're looking like we're on the right path.
Okay, first, we have not had a lot of discussion with CD on this, and I predict our involvement in this will become more along the lines as we get a little bit further when it gets to, I think, one of the next phases of the ordinance will be sort of what happens if people violate the new statute, and they have sixty grams instead of thirty and some of those kinds of things, and I do have some thoughts on that. With regards to these sorts of things, I would probably say more distance is better, generally speaking. I predict we'll have certain things that we'll have to deal with with regards to, I don't want my kids to go out and play in the backyard because the neighbors are out smoking, and we'll have those kinds of things to sort of referee and mediate. With regards to this, generally speaking, my thoughts would be I would err on the side of a slightly longer or bigger distance. I guess I'll kind of keep it short like that for tonight.
Thank you, that was, that was my question.
Other questions? Mary Alice?
I have a question for council, is that allowed? Depends. But I don't wanna make a motion unless I.
Discuss in a challenge, discuss in a way that challenges us.
Are you asking for a straw poll?
Thank you.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, may I have a straw poll?
Do we need a motion on the floor for that first?
Can I have a straw poll for whether or not we should change the B2 to special instead of conditional use?
That would be in the table of uses.
Well, can you repeat your question, Mary Alice?
Sure, right now in the zoning for B2, which is business arterial, in order to have a dispensary, you need a conditional permit, and I'm wondering if we should have a special use permit instead? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Since the council, it's changing C to S.
So that I'm.
In all instances.
I can, I can make a, in all instances? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2019-10-059, and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance cannabis text amendment, plain case 2385T19 with two, three changes.
Can I interject and recommend everyone turn to ordinance attachment A, and we go through these changes step by step, and be easier to see them than, rather than in your memo. But behind the ordinance in your packet is attachment A with clean language to work from.
All right, so Bill, you're gonna have to help me, but I believe for section V13, regulation of cannabis uses, on A2, we were going to strike the distance?
Strike the whole paragraph.
Strike the whole paragraph, all right. Get rid of number two, it's gone.
Yep.
Okay, the second thing would, would be under section V13, regulation of cannabis uses, B. For number three, I would suggest that we choose number three, and the third thing would be in the table V1, table of uses, the conditional use permit for B2 be changed to special.
For dispensary?
For, for dispensary, thank you, and we already changed, I already recommended that we change two of the others. So that's, I believe, my motion.
And would you like to add no non-medical dispensary, add non-medical to the language in V13B1? That was recommended by legal.
No non-medical.
No non-medical dispensary, or, and then pre-existing non-medical dispensary?
Yes.
Okay. It's four changes.
Four changes.
Where did that take place?
Okay, so we're getting rid of paragraph.
So we're getting rid of paragraph two. The special use is under dispensary B2. I didn't do anything with the other two because that was under B3, option three. That changes it automatically.
She wants option three.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I could just relay those real quick. So strike this, number two here.
Yes.
Add no, non-medical here and here.
Yes.
Yes.
Select option three.
Yes.
And put an S here, here, and here.
And there.
And here.
In all, in all instances.
In all instances.
Yeah, and medical, okay, sounds good.
Show me the, where the S will be on the, on the table, five?
Everywhere the Cs are.
We're just replacing them with Ss.
Okay. What that does is give more flexibility for location, but also more levels of review.
And I like that.
Dennis?
Second that motion.
Okay, so that was made by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Discussion?
Yeah, I would like, just for, it's a, it's a text thing. In table V1, that's on page two of the special attachment, the asterisk says at the bottom of the table, "use permitted by right." It's funny because you don't capitalize P for permitted, but you have R for right capitalized, and you're using Ps in the table, and I think that you should make either the P capitalized or make it an R.
I, I agree with you. In my defense, that is copied directly from our existing zoning ordinance and not subject to changes in the current text amendment. I just copied it over so you can see what the asterisk, what the footnote that's already existing says.
I'm not labeling blame, I'm just making corrections, which I think actually make it clearer to understand, you know, the nomenclature of the table itself.
I appreciate that.
Any other clarifications? Bill?
Discussion, I guess.
Oh, yes.
I guess the only thing I'm a little worried about is that the dispensaries can be close to the residential zoned areas. So the only distance requirement is from schools, but looking at the map, I don't see really any particular areas that I can think of that would be major problems that would be close to R1, R2, so I don't know if we need to, I mean, if Aurora is the best-case scenario, and they're saying three hundred feet, that seems like a lot, and it seems like, it also seems kind of weird to treat R1 and R2 so differently than R4, you know, we don't really care if they're next door to an apartment complex, but we do seem to care if they're, at least for the cultivation centers, we do seem to care if they're next door to R1 or 2. So that's, I don't know, that's just something I don't feel real comfortable with. I don't think it's real likely we're gonna probably get a cultivation center in the city limits because we have a five percent tax on utilities, and they're pretty heavy, heavy electricity users, but who knows? But maybe a craft grower or something. So I don't know, I'd like to hear if anybody else has concerns about whether there should be a distance requirement for dispensaries and residential.
Well, the, isn't the three hundred feet the distance requirement? Right?
For dispensaries, it would be one hundred, as proposed.
But one hundred just to schools, right?
Sorry, yes, one hundred.
Any residentially zoned lot in the city of Urbana? That's what I thought, since we're doing the special use permit.
That's for cultivation centers and.
Oh, my bad.
Not for dispensaries.
Well, I can, I could comment.
Dennis?
All right, I mean, I kind of like the direction that you're going in, Bill, and, you know, our police chief has just said that more space is preferable to the police department as well, and so I wonder if a hundred feet from schools could be three hundred feet, and with that damage, anybody's a chance, I mean, schools are pretty isolated actually already, but for dispensaries, I mean, I don't know, maybe we should codify it, a desire to have a little more space, I don't know.
It has to be at least two blocks from the school?
We do things in feet, I think.
Jared?
I would just propose to council to consider, you know, the larger ethical fight of recreational marijuana and recreational cannabis in light of alcohol, and, you know, if we're not gonna, I don't know, I feel strongly that we would be treating something that we have all been fighting for a long time to be considered in a light that has been stigmatized and bullied and, you know, trawn down by an industry that in all respects kills tens, if not hundreds of thousands of people a year, to an industry that kills virtually no one. I know that there are some extreme circumstances that have come up in recent years as potencies have become higher, consumptions can become extreme, and people are, started to suffer hospitalizations and things of that nature. Those things notwithstanding, I think that unless we are going to treat liquor stores in the same manner, I would not support trying to demonize these institutions and people who are trying to do these things as, as any worse. If anything, you know, they're far less dangerous than what you can obtain in a, in a liquor store, so food for thought for you all.
Eric?
I, I agree with Jared. I don't think we should make, I don't think we should impose restrictions more stringent than restrictions on liquor stores in, with respect to these, these distances to schools.
Now, if we wanted to increase the distance of liquor stores to also accommodate this, I would, I would support that, but I would not support more stringent restrictions in this manner unless we're gonna do so in our liquor ordinance as well.
Yeah, I guess my thought is that we have a lot of liquor stores, and we'll just have one or two dispensaries, and the traffic might be a concern, but I do think that by restricting it to the business zones, I mean, zoning, should be able to handle it with zoning without the distance regulations, I think.
Did you want to say something?
I'm sorry, mumbling, not on the mic. Do we have a restriction between, for spacing between liquor stores, Kevin? Do we have anything that says, hey, you can't have a liquor store within fifteen hundred feet of another liquor store?
Not that I'm aware, but in my experience, I don't think we do.
Okay, for, so, just for example, we're already saying you can't have one within fifteen hundred feet of another one, you know, we can't even have two in downtown, and we've got how many bars in downtown that anybody can go and consume who knows how much, anyway? Not to believe the point.
Point taken. Further comment? Are you ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
That motion passes, and thank you for your very thoughtful consideration of this. That brings us to the end of this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.